Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, March the 12th, 2024. This is a hybrid public meeting, so members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are at the Norton Public Library. You can also join via the Zoom meeting app with meeting ID 638-929-1060. Meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. For future sessions, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, so they can be read into the record if you are not able to do so. We do have a busy agenda this evening, which, so I'm going to skip over the initial part of our agenda and go right into the meat of the agenda. Posted on our agenda pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapters 30A, Section 21A3, we are looking to move into executive discussion, executive session, to discuss strategy relating to pending litigation, known as Amio Inc., the Griffin Norton Planning Board, as well as Condy and Capital Partners LLC, the Town Norton Planning Board, because I declare that discussing the matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. So a vote to go into executive session would be expected, and votes may occur in the executive session, after which the board would return. So if I can have a motion and a second and a vote to move into executive session, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I will go through the roll for the vote. Eric, I will start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes, and I will vote yes. Do you have a number?
Number.
For Jim?
Yes, I have Jim's number.
Okay. So, Jim, we will dial you in via phone shortly, as we adjourn to an alternate room. As I mentioned, we will return to this room, estimated, I'm going to say, 30, 45 minutes, we'll see. But thank you very much, everybody, and we'll talk to you soon. With all the members back, the board is now returning from our executive decision, executive session, and we'll resume the rest of our agenda. Thank you, everybody who was waited patiently with us. It's just the execution of decision for SP 20475 for Zero Rear Eddie Street. We voted on this at our last session. Brian, did you have anything in addition that you wanted to add?
No. We, based on my looking at it, we passed the Common Drive, but denied the other two, and we just needed the findings for the other two.
Okay. So the specific findings for the duplexes, so specific findings being relating to the use in the wetland area, correct?
Yes. They have another alternative by right.
So applicant had alternatives available by right on the site. Is there anything further, or is that the only one that we really need to focus on at this point? I would say by right at the end of that.
Can I just copy that for the other one?
Is there anything further for that decision that we wanted to add? Otherwise, we'll move on.
Should that say motion denied?
The second, the first, the Common Driveway was approved, the wetland and duplexes were denied.
I thought it just said motion passes.
Yep.
Right above, Brian.
Yeah. It says motion passes, but it says.
Good catch.
You're right denied at the bottom.
Good catch. I'll just hold for a second, is there anything further? I don't think so. I don't see anybody jumping here. Okay, we have two covenant releases here. First one is for DEF 13932 and SP 14704 for Pine Street. We talked about this one at our last session, and we've reset on that with Town Staff. I believe we've shared, Brian has shared some letters from highway and from water. Next to me here, I also have a certificate of performance for a covenant release specifying that, as well as a note from the Treasurer. So Treasurer basically saying, I have no objection to the strategy if the planning board wishes to proceed. So she does say that it would be up to the planning board to decide if the modified covenant is enough to cover estimated costs and monitor as the project progresses. So she's not doing the math, but we went through the math, I think, last time a little bit. I know we do have, Al, if you wanted to comment, if you wanted to add anything to the introduction I gave there?
No, I think, I think we, we did, you know, you asked for the highway, which we did a site walk, and you have a letter to that effect. Water, you can sue, you have a letter to that effect, that everything's complete. The only thing left is when we ask for individual permits for the houses, you know, we have to pay the fees and fill out the applicable paperwork, but I don't have that done. I do have a, I do have a report from the engineer, from our engineer, that was for the paving, if that's, if that means anything to you. You know, he was there for that. Because there really, there wasn't anybody from the town that really, you know, did that part of it.
Okay, and this is just to, from the original paving, what was done?
Yes.
Okay, just to specify how much was paid, everything, temperature of the asphalt, when it was poured, and how much of it. I'll pass this down, in case anybody wants to take a look at that as well. So again, the applicant is asking for a covenant release, and they're putting, as the security lots, 23 to 44 of the project. Need a motion? Yes, we would need a motion. Motion to release the covenant? Do I have to? Is there a number for it? I think that's, I think that's fine.
Cool. Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to release the covenant in the amount requested. Any further discussion? I see the document hasn't made its all the way down yet, so I'll just hold for a second to see if there's anything else that we wanted to ask.
I'm good if you want to roll call.
Okay. Any further discussion? And Jim, I'm going to put you on the spot, just to make sure that I'm not going to.
No, I'm good.
Okay. So I'll go through the roll here. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So that is approved, and we can.
So do you sign it tonight, and Brian, get it authorized tomorrow, so that we can, obviously, it's us, we have to record it.
Okay. And you're looking for the entire board to sign this, correct?
It would be better, yeah.
How's that around?
No, I think that's funny, you know, what you have here is funny, so.
Yeah, okay.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody. See you next time.
Okay. We also have one additional covenant release on our agenda, which is Mulberry Brook Drive. I know we had representative here. Thank you, thank you for waiting. I hope you were able to get some work done on your phone.
Paul Jodis, Jodis and Sons, representing, working with Nate and Brianna Dugan. Nate's a firefighter, he's on duty tonight in Boston. Brianna, last time we were here, she was nine months pregnant, she had a baby, and she's holding a baby right now, so they could be here and not be a full report. We just completed everything that we, that was required. We submitted the plans last Friday, Brian has them here on the, the haz built, that we're looking for back in 1999. If you recall, the last one was here, it was in August. We had to bring national grid, had to get the underground service down to the transformer that before we could do that, we had to have a pole brought across the street from Burton Street, but that side, we're moving roadways. We got the underground service in, the transformer pad down at the end of the street, we have the street sign on, according to the Highway Department, where the Mobergh Road, you know, set its local plan. Deputy Chief Jason Robbins was down, these are the letter from him, that he sent to Brian, that he was able to bring apparatus down, so public safety department's addressed. There really wasn't anything else. The haz built showed that the road was built, as it was originally proposed back in 1999. First, it was by Chris Yager, the engineer, he's now a town planer in Plainville. Mike Trobridge has now taken over from there, and it's just a Trobridge plan, that's just it.
Okay.
I didn't bring any paperwork or anything for a covenant release, I didn't know, you know, what we have to do.
The first one was a bit of a special case, so.
It was.
There may be additional paperwork required. But in terms of releasing the covenant, again, this is for the roadway itself, correct?
Right, private road.
Okay. Do you have additional questions for the applicant?
The represent.
Or the represent, I guess you're an applicant, so close.
Oh, yeah, I was actually.
Okay. Additional questions, comments? Okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve the covenant release in this item as well.
Motion to approve the covenant release on Mulberry Drive.
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion, and Mulberry Brook Drive.
Mulberry Brook Drive.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I will go through the roll here. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. So it is approved, and whatever we need to work through with the Treasurer or anybody else, we can work through that, probably through Brian.
So what will be the next steps?
So.
Next step would be to get a certificate of performance, which, in the documentation you gave us before, you had given us this one, which is, what is the release of charity being held for Mulberry? And then we had.
So that was all completed, so there wasn't any need for any kind of bond or anything like that?
Right. Covenant release was made, or at least written out, so I don't know if anything is needed.
So what else, we just need to have that signed, so I can bring that to the registry deeds?
I don't know if it was already done, that's why I'm not sure, it's typed out.
It's typed out.
So we can tie that up with the Treasurer, and if we need to sign that form, we can sign it and move forward. Yeah.
So do I, do anything, or is that what you guys do?
That's on us.
Okay. Yeah, because Nick, I afraid he would need to have me to bring a receipt from the, in order for him to give us a building permit to get started on the lot. We would need to have something from registry deeds to show us the covenant release. I don't need to come back here, though.
You shouldn't, no.
No. So I just need to have the release to bring to Nick, because I can get all season before.
Okay.
All right?
And I can work with you on that, Brian, if I need to?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well said.
I think so. Yeah?
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Okay. Moving right along here, we have an A and R endorsement for Greatwood Circle, the applicant's Mary Cannon. You know, it's Richard Rosario, I think this is the plan here, correct?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we have anybody here, I'm not sure if there's anybody on the meeting for this application, Brian, that you're aware of?
I'm here, Jacobson, D and P.
Thank you, sir. Again, apologies for keeping everybody waiting, but Town Council's billable hours comes first for the towns, so.
Just good.
So we have the plans here in front of us, if you just want to give just a brief narrative of, of the project and what's happening with the different lots, and I know the Historical Society is also involved, so.
Yeah, so I'm here representing, Victor Rosario, he was in negotiations with the Historical Society to purchase a couple of parcels from them, parcel A and B, and he's basically going to add one in the back, up in the right corner, and one to the side, which would be parcel A. And with those two additions, he will get two regulation lots. Lot one would be 40,000, lot one is 42 square feet, lot two will be 40,000, you know, 20 square feet, and they both have 150 feet of frontage. I think you guys are in receipt of a letter from the Historical Society, say that they are on board with this transaction.
Yes.
I think other than that, it's pretty straightforward, we got it bought this market, and I think you have another letter saying that there are no wetlands on the street.
Yes. So in summary, instead of one 71,000 square foot lot, you're going to have two 40,000 and change.
Yes, correct.
And I think the access to both would be through the Greatwood Circle, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Sorry, I took over your keyboard there, with the.
That's okay, that's fine.
If we don't have any questions, the next action would be a motion to endorse the A and R, and then we would sign it.
Motion to endorse A and R dash four.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to endorse. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, I will go through the roll here. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So for those that are here in person, Jim, you're excused, just make sure that we do sign this before we leave this evening, and we can have, get these to the, to the applicant in follow-up, so.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Yep, and the next I am R agenda is up, is a continuation of site plan reviews 20100, 20103, 20106, and special permit 19928, 19935, and 20107 for Zero Mansfield Avenue. It's an application to build some multifamily structures at Zero Mansfield Avenue, and the applicant is here. So I know you said you had a brief introduction, just as an update of what, since it's been a little while since we had you.
Yes, good to see you all again, it has been a while. Jack Jacoby, 144 Bangs Street, that'll we're all representing the applicant. So we have made substantial progress with the Conservation Commission, including last night. We are optimistic that at their next meeting on the 25th, I believe is the date, whatever two weeks from yesterday is, that we would be able to close that hearing. It went through the peer review process, and their most recent comment, just had a couple of minor comments that Dan Campbell addressed with them last night, we'll do that in writing, expect to get their clean, the clean letter from the review engineers, and be able to wrap that up. With regard to your process, there were some failures of communication, mostly on our part, and we'll take responsibility for that with getting the payment to the traffic review engineer. By that, we, at about 4:30 today, Brian emailed me that report, and so we've seen VHB's report, you may or may not have had a chance to read it yet.
Not in detail, I will admit.
Yeah. Basically, it had very few comments that we need to address, but we do need to address a few, and it was based on the old project with Lot E included, so I would assume that their review would be even more favorable now that a number of units have been reduced. So we, not sure whether you want our traffic engineer to appear at your next meeting to address these things, but we're certainly prepared to do that, if that's the sense of the board.
Okay.
And then finally, we filed a while ago, but I haven't been here in person, a motion to withdraw Lot E without prejudice, and not go forward on that, so we would like to get you to act on that, so that that is off the table.
Okay.
And Dan Campbell is here, if you want him to talk to you about, you know, where the buildings are and what we've done with conservation, we can do that. If you, I know it's late, if you want to wait two weeks to look at that, we're certainly willing to do that as well.
Let's see, I think in general, I think it might be good to hear from Mr. Campbell and just get an update as to the project, just to make sure that we're all clear what we're looking at, what the proposal is right now, what has changed, what it looks like with Lot E there. Obviously, there's nothing there. The overriding thought behind that being that, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the board, Norton does have a town election coming up in mid to late April, and two members of the board are, their spots are up for election, so after that point, you would be left with five continuing members over the entirety of the project. So being as a special permit where you need five approvals, I think that is probably in your best interest to try to get this to a point where it can be buttoned up prior to that.
I think two weeks from tonight, we should be in that position to try and button this up. So why don't we ask Dan to just show you where we are right now? Don't think it'll take particularly long, but understand what you're asking.
Good evening, Dan Campbell, Public Design Group, on behalf of the applicant. What I just want to share with you is the modifications that we made since the last public hearing. Clearly, it's been a little while since we've been to you, as Attorney Jacoby said, a lot of what we've been doing is what was requested, making sure that our drainage was buttoned up, making sure that CONCOM was able to approve a project. We've been back and forth with the review engineer, with minor comments outstanding, and I can show you the area that we're left talking about at the meeting last night, but we did leave the meeting with a hope that draft conditions could be, could be issued. So if you can see my screen, Lot C and Lot D, from the last time we saw you, look almost identical. What doesn't look identical is the placement of drainage. So we have some modification of drainage in the middle of the site, some modification of drainage in the back left-hand corner of the site, and we've moved around, say, the dumpster enclosure at that last public hearing that we had with the planning board, but we have finalized some of that infrastructure with the Conservation Commission, based upon questions they've asked, based upon requests that they've made, such as the slight camp to Building D on the overall site plan. As you can see, the grading and drainage, overall infrastructure, looks approximately the same, we just have a below-ground basin in the middle, rather than an above-ground basin, and the purpose of that was creating some place for the general public that lives in these apartments to congregate, if they wish to congregate outside of their apartments. The Conservation Commission was a little concerned that they wouldn't be able to walk out the back of their apartments, though there's about 10 feet before you get to the slope, so we did create that sort of central courtyard area that concern has in some of their other developments. The area of, subject to the, the last set of comments from the review engineer, has to do with this area of Building C, or the building of Lot C, you can see the corner of the building proximity to the retaining wall. Their concern, the review engineer, was the slight amount of flow that's going to be from this grass that's going to go over the retaining wall towards the apartment property. What we discussed last evening was basically creating a swale out of these contours that go this direction, to the rear of the property, a swale out of these contours that go this direction, and creating a small grass swale, small depression in this area that captures the flow that's coming off of, of the edge of the building and that wall.
The smallest retaining basin in history.
But we do agree with the review engineer, and we are going to handle that in our next review. We've actually written a response to the review engineer, reviewed it this evening, and hopefully we'll have it back into CONCOM tomorrow, so we'll have, hopefully, approval, as Attorney Jacoby said, not next Monday, but the following Monday, from the, from the Conservation Commission. So I know, as was stated, it's been a little while, but I'm happy to discuss any other changes. Parking has overall stayed the same, the amount of land disturbance has stayed the same, the units, we are still at our overall unit count, the 24-unit building is the smaller 36-unit building, further away from the residences. Our closest point to the residence is on Reservoir Road. To Reservoir Road itself, not to the physical structures, is 251 and a half feet, and that's this dimension here, to the back of Lot D, and that's to the edge of the right lane. So the actual structure that we're closest to, it's about 320 feet away.
I know in the past, we had, there was fencing along the rear of the property, correct?
There was fencing along the rear of Lot E that separated Reservoir from the property, but we've eliminated Lot E, and now the, the fencing, so to speak, is all of the natural vegetation on Lot E.
Thank you, just confirming that, yeah.
And there is a small retaining, retaining wall that runs along the back before you go down the slope, and one of the things the Conservation Commission talked about last night was designing a series of signs that would say something to the effect of environmentally sensitive area, do not enter, no dumping, you know, because we don't want people, they're legally allowed to go down the slope, but we just don't want it.
Yeah. Okay. So I know, I know, for some, I know for some of those Lot E was maybe the, the lot that maybe created the most complications from an environmental standpoint, I know, Steve, you had talked about that. Are there further questions or comments for the applicant based on what we have here, which is just the two buildings on those two remaining lots?
Can we just go back to that retaining wall? How tall is that? What are we talking for a height?
Absolutely. So the retaining wall itself, let me share again, and I'll show you where we're, we're talking about. So the retaining wall itself, that Attorney Jacoby mentioned, is at the rear of the site, and it varies in height across the overall building. So the closest point to Lot E, for instance, we're only three quarters of a foot tall. As we approach the corner of the building, we're at approximately. As we approach the corner of the building, we're at approximately seven feet tall. Behind the building, we're back to a foot tall. As we approach the other corner of the building, we're approximately seven feet tall. And we go back down to a foot to three feet tall on the other side of that green area. And basically, we're coming and going because of the additional area we've got to grade in those areas. But the retaining wall that we have on the site plan is a large block retaining wall. So a foot tall, we're actually going to have to bury part of that block just to get it to that foot. So a seven-foot-tall wall is, is only three sets of block tall. And it's, it's facing the rear of the site or facing the wetlands themselves.
So are we concerned with any type of guardrail situation or anything, someone falling off that? And maybe that's more of a building popping issue, I guess?
Actually, it's a, it's a great question. Any wall that's over four feet tall is required by, by law to have a four-foot fence or other similar fall protection on top of it. So the portions of the wall that are closest to the building will have a, a four-foot chain link fence on the top.
So where required, you'll have the, some type of barrier?
Absolutely. And then in the other locations, as Attorney Jacoby alluded to, we're going to have posts every 25 to 50 feet that have a sign on them, environmentally sensitive area. There's a placard that the town of Norton has for their wetlands areas. And then additionally, we're going to have a no dumping sign underneath that. The concern of the Conservation Commission is specifically landscapers who, who tend to do their mowing, and it's a convenient place right over the edge of a wall. Rightfully so, they'd like us to at least notify that, that that's not okay.
But since this is not a condominium project, it's a rental project. We have control over the landscapers. We hire them. We monitor them so that we feel confident that we can not incur a fine from the Conservation Commission for doing the wrong thing.
And there, because it's rentals, there's not a homeowners association where we'd need to see that written into the O and M manual?
Correct. The CERN will continue to own this.
Can you just refresh my memory? Approximate swift, what did you on the apartments? It's been a while.
Dan?
On the, the buildings themselves.
You're talking about each individual, or you're talking about the buildings in total?
Exactly.
The individual units? The individual units, just a guess at what they're going to be.
So the, the units themselves, they have one and two-bedroom units. Their standard units are, are a fairly good size. I would have to look at their unit layouts for this particular structure, but we did submit them at the beginning of the process. I just don't have them pulled up right this second. I'll be prepared to, to discuss it next time, though.
Like a pew to sleeping, or else I would look.
Okay. But one and two bedrooms.
Yeah.
So I would assume minimum probably 600 feet for the one bedrooms.
Definitely.
Yeah, probably bigger.
They have a sizable apartment on a typical basis.
Yeah, so.
10% of them are being set aside is affordable?
That section of the bylaw does not apply. The interesting thing about the way your bylaw is written is that I suspect that whoever wrote it, wrote it backwards. I don't want to cast discursions, but what it says is that it only applies to lots that were created before a date about 20 years ago. These lots were created after that. I suspect that, that they intended to make it apply to new lots rather than old lots, but that's what your bylaw says, which is strange to me.
Yeah, I still haven't gotten a determination from counsel for that. I know we had discussed about that in December or previously, but, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's our position, that the bylaw is, does not apply since these lots were created after the relevant date.
Okay. Brian, if you can make, make a note, just to make sure that we do get a determination from Amy prior to our next meeting.
Which I imagine is, we're going to continue within two weeks? Or the next March meeting, rather.
That has been the applicant's statement, yeah.
Yeah, I was assuming you had a meeting in two weeks.
I believe we do, yes.
26.
That is two weeks, yes. I'm not good at math. I looked it up. That's five. Okay.
So that's what we had to present, and as I said, we would like you to act on the motion to withdraw Lot E so that that is no longer on your table.
Do you have a clear reference as to which site plan review and special permit tie, is tied to Lot E? Or would you like us to take it without referencing specific numbers in the motion?
I had written a letter a long time ago.
I have.
You have it? Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to withdraw Site Plan Review 20106 and Special Permit 20107. Both should be Lot E.
And that is without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to withdraw the specified site plan review and special permit for Lot E without prejudice. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll move forward with a vote on that motion. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
So those are withdrawn.
That's what we have to present, and one of our neighbors is here. So unless there's anything else for us, I'll sit back down.
Any additional questions for the applicant this time, prior to public comment?
One question, the smaller building, the 24-unit, is the corner of that sticking in the 25-foot no disturbance zone? It looked like it was overlapping on the map.
I'm happy to answer that, no. The, it, it is running through the text itself. It's not running through the zone. So there's no disturbance whatsoever inside of the 25-foot. Any substantial amount of our disturbance exists outside of, or adjacent to the 50-foot. So 25-foot is why we have the walls where we do. We leave about two feet below the walls between the wall and the 25, so we've got buildable area.
And to clarify, there won't be any public access to the recreation area on site?
Correct.
Okay.
Could I ask about electric vehicle requirements and what has been planned?
For the proposed development having to do with the stretch building code?
Yeah, the 20% of the spaces have to be EV-ready.
They have to be EV-ready, not necessarily EV-installed. So we do have on the site plan electrical conduit running to the exterior of the buildings to give that availability.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just another box that we have to check with every single project now.
And it's, that, it goes back to September.
Okay. Additional questions for the applicant at this time? Otherwise, I'll ask them to step down and see if there are any additional residents who'd like to ask questions to the board.
Can I just clarify? So I'm looking at the second peer review of storm water from February 19. I'm assuming there's a reply to that to button up all of those remaining issues?
Yes, that's what I believe Dan referred to earlier.
They said they had written it, but haven't sent it yet.
Got it.
Yeah.
So there's, there's actually a reply, 3-8 was there, the most recent peer review, that was sent to us. That peer review had four outstanding comments. Three of those comments were related to that area I just discussed, having to do with swelling water off of, of the top of that wall. The fourth comment actually had to do with the TSS calculations, the overall percentage of TSS removal for the property. We had calculated it, I think, at 92.8, and the peer reviewer is calculating it a little bit less than that. We did look back at our numbers, and I think it's 91.7 instead of 92.8. Still greater than the 90%, but they are very good at sticklers for paperwork. So we wanted to make sure it was right, so that we're going to respond to that tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
If there's nothing further, I'll ask Mr. Jacoby if he wants to sit down. And I know we have a number of people here joining us virtually as well as joining us in person. So I'll turn around and say if you'd like to come up and speak, please go ahead, since you're already ready for the podium, and I feel like you were going to ask too anyway, so I'll just, short circuit.
Willing to wait, but make it as brief as possible. Just to reiterate, it's a village commercial district.
If you can just restate your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jim Shabat. I live at 56 Mansfield Avenue. Apparently, I'm now a former neighbor since you withdrew Lot E. I'm down that end.
You're still close enough.
Okay, okay. I guess I wanted to reiterate that this is a village commercial district, and what was promised at town meeting after town meeting is that we would have shops and commercial enterprises in this area. Therefore, the worst possible use we could see would be residential housing. As any business owner would tell you, residential housing hinders business. People who live in houses complain about business. So if we allow housing in this area, we're going to close the door to the business that we were hoping for to create an actual center of town. And then just to quickly address the density issue, the, one of the primary criteria for special permit is that it has to be better than if the permit were denied. Now, if the permit were denied, the worst-case scenario is 11 single-family house. I would argue, I would just state that 60 units of apartments is not better than 11 single-family homes. I think argue would be too strong of a word in, in that case. The only other thing I'd like to address is the peer review and the Conservation Commission, and we've talked about that before, about process, about their wants and wishes. I think what Attorney Jacoby is saying is, is correct. I think they will be able to get approval. But it's approval somewhat under duress. One of the criteria for their approval is that you keep all of your development as far away from the wetlands as possible. That's Lot E. By taking Lot E out of the equation, they are now as far away as possible, but they're withholding the area that would have gotten them further away. So that's, that's not really a good-faith process, in my estimation. But aside from that and the other peer review, the traffic and all that, I'm sure it's all going to work out. But it's all going to work out in the same way that I'm going to guess, the only one I can be sure of is the MacBook is a 13-inch monitor. I'm guessing those are roughly the same. And they all fulfill what any IT expert would attest to as far as being used for the, suitable for the purpose. You can use your computer. You can read the monitor. It conveys the information. In every technical aspect, it works. A 75-inch monitor would be undesirable, sitting in front of you on that desk. But it would meet every criteria that an expert peer reviewer would have set before them. So I guess what I'm saying is, we certainly need peer review because we don't want things that don't meet the criteria. But in this case, you have a project that will certainly meet all of the criteria, yet fail miserably in the criteria for a special permit, and I won't take any more of your time.
There are definitely criteria beyond the scope of peer review.
Correct, and I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll also just say, for anybody joining via the Zoom meeting, if you would like to speak, I'm going to try and do my best to go back and forth if anybody would like. I did not mention this at the outset, but the Zoom meeting does have a reactions function where you can raise your virtual hand. If you do that, we will see you, and we will call on you as best we can, is that? And I do see we have somebody there already. I can't read the name because my eyes are not what they used to be, but I see you there laughing with the glasses.
I see John Sheehan.
John, if you can go ahead and just state your name and address for the record, please.
It's John Sheehan. I may pronounce it wrong, that's okay. My name's John Sheehan. I live at 25 Reservoir Street. Good to see you all again. I apologize, the last couple meetings I missed, personal matters. I have a kind of slew of things, real quickly. We changed the plans again to get rid of Lot E, but we increased the first building to, how big is that first building, a square foot? Anybody know what the top they had?
I don't have the, I pulled the plans down that I can confirm in follow-up, just in terms of the actual size.
Well, what I'm curious to see is, they used to be 24, 24, 24. I'm just curious to see if the building grew one of the half times, or did those apartments grow bigger than what was originally planned?
I believe that that first building farthest on the left is now 32 units.
36.
36.
36.
So it, so it has grown 50%. It is not making up for the entirety of the 24.
Now, did the building grow 50%? Or did the building grow more in size than 50%?
I would have to check.
The building is exactly 50% larger, Mr. Chair, as, as long as you don't mind me answering.
Thank, I appreciate you answering, Mr. Campbell.
You too.
Let's, I'll, I'll try and put everything through me as best as I can.
Thank you.
I understand.
Next question then. On the plans, you guys do not have a revised lighting plan. Is there any time that's going to be done soon, or should we assume that's going to be the same? Well, I, I don't like, I don't have a, you assume, I'm on, on TV, so I can't say the rest, but.
I, I know the cliche, the, the saying as well. I will confirm that with the applicant.
So on the revised lighting plans, I'd like to know when that's around. The next question I have, as they're cutting down all the trees and stuff to build these places, this is a straightforward question. Are we allowed to plant stuff back in the wetlands to help compensate what they're taking away or not?
I would say that that is a question for the Conservation Director in terms of what they do and do not permit in conservation area spaces. Different areas have different regulations as it relates to erosion and all sorts of other stuff. So that would be something specifically for them in terms of, I'll call it a carbon offset if you're going to, thinking of it from that perspective. Tim?
No, actually, I was thinking about, well, not carbon, but more just putting back what went away if they're going to, you know, and then to help fill in the area and stuff like that, to sort of compensate what's coming down. All right, so.
And Steve, if you wanted to just answer.
One question I got, that was a, playing what? But you guys tasked with financial impacts of projects as well in the planning of this. What I mean is, you don't look at how much to cross the school department, the fire, police, and ambulances, and what the load is of the people moving into this building?
That is something that has been discussed in this, in this session, in this, I think in discussions around this project. There are portions of that that the board is not generally legally allowed to consider as it relates to the project.
But can you explain what is, is like, so if we were to say that, you know, we put 60 apartments in, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm out of bounds, I'm not supposed to talk about this, I don't know. But if we assume just 50% of the apartments bring kids in.
I understand what you're going for, yeah.
No, so, I mean, is that allowed to be discussed and brought up? I mean, the same could be said about fire. You're going to need more fire personnel. You're going to need more police personnel, DPW. And I believe we're on a $4 million shortfall right now for the town. Did I read that right or not?
I do not know the exact budget numbers for the town, but I certainly know that the challenge is that the school department has been talking about as it relates to its budget. I know that, I believe one of your neighbors has previously cited a study, which has come up now and again about the economic impact of residential uses per single-family house or whatever on overall net of town services. That, as it relates to choosing something else, is not a criteria that we can use as a determining factor to deny a project.
All right. Thank you for explaining that to me. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. But obviously, you can see the implication between 11 houses and 60 apartments of blah, 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 blah.
Yes.
All right, cool. So then, a couple of questions on what was just brought up tonight. They're building this lot, or their dreams of building this lot. They're going to put up retaining walls. We agree on that?
That is shown on the plans.
How high is this building going to be? Well, I, I apologize for the confusion in this question. this question. If the building's gonna have basements?
I will ask that the applicant. I don't believe that they do, but I will confirm that. And in terms of, are you looking for an overall height from the Mansfield Avenue? Or from Reservoir?
Yes, yes, because, yes, because what I wanna ask a question to be proper. If there are no basements, we'll consider the first floor at the bottom of the building. What is that height in relationship to Mansfield Avenue?
Okay. I, I think we may have covered that just in the initial sessions that we had over the project, but it's certainly something that we can ask the applicant to restate.
Well, what I'd like to, why I'm going back to this, and I apologize, is this has been going on for a while. When I went back and looked at the drop box, I think this has been going on for four years now. Over this weekend, we got some rain, in case anybody didn't know. And we have some new houses on Reservoir Street that are experiencing flooding as we speak. I live to the Reservoir Street side, the back of this project. I am below Reservoir Street. I can sit here and I watch the rain run down my property, all the way by my house, and ride out like Mother Nature designed. So, you know, as we sit here, we are on the bottom of this hill that they are building. My question is, how much higher is that hill gonna be? And where are they gonna push all this water to? Because as we spoke this week, the water from the wetlands was on Reservoir Street.
Understood.
It was already pouring out onto Reservoir Street without anything built there. So if we build a retention basin, put more dirt up in here, the dozen or so of us are getting the water coming out this way, and then going down the street the other way toward the new homes, they're gonna get it as well? Has that been thought of, addressed, or?
Yes.
Are you sure you approved that, or what?
I know the site has a number of drainage features. The way that Norton's stormwater by, stormwater bylaw is designed, is that the project, and Mr. Campbell, correct me if I say something wrong here, but I think I'm pretty good with this one. Compared, we compare the project to a no-build-do-nothing condition. So whatever the water is doing now, the project needs to retain within its own boundaries as much of the water as it does under a no-build condition as it does now. So there can't be any increase of runoff off of the site post-construction compared to what there is now. So that is what the, that is what they design their drainage and basins and all of that stuff around, and also what the peer reviewer is checking them on throughout all of their calculations.
Okay. So I, you, you repeated that almost rabid image, did the last time we discussed this in a different type of context. So my question to you is, if the planning board moves forward with this all, and everything's done, they're up, the company's away, they're collecting their rent, what are the repercussions to them if/when the water comes over? I mean, we've met Mother Nature. No one's stopped the Mississippi. No one has stopped the oceans. I know FEMA changed the 100-year flood zones to much bigger areas because as we all get old in life, we're learning, we're not winning this battle against water at all. You know, and this winter is a perfect example. I mean, another five inches in this week, and we're supposed to get soaked again this weekend. I mean, as we drive by right now, tonight wouldn't be a good time, but maybe tomorrow morning, or even Saturday or Sunday in the daylight, that is loaded with water, right up at the top.
Oh, yeah. I've been driving past the BFW. I've seen that puddle, too.
So I would leave it to the planning board to, well, I don't know who I leave this question on, but this is recorded, so I hate to be the guy to say, "I told you so," in this context, if we have to come back and find this meeting. But what would be, again, the ramifications to fix that if it did happen? I know it's if, 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 but right now, I still have water running down my property.
Let's see. Let's see. I would say that plans on paper also need to be supervised by the Building Commissioner and all of the people that supervise the construction when they go in. So the plans that are proposed on paper are the plans that are actually built, so that all of those drainage features actually are put in as designed and should function as designed. Step one. Step two, in terms of, if all of that is done, and there is still water in some way, shape, or form that is in excess of what is the, that no-build condition, and if that could be proven, then that'd be something that, I think that would probably, if you want the legal answer, I'm gonna say that's gonna be a civil matter between the, between the apartment owners and whoever's property is impacted.
Okay.
That'd be, that'd be my interpretation of that. So it wouldn't be yell at the town. It would be neighbors dealing with it, even if one neighbor is a company.
Right, okay. All right. And then, final, final question, thought. I don't know who's been in town long enough to know this. So probably about 15, 20 years ago, Chuckle can come in, there was a lot of groundwater contamination in this exact lot that they're building on. Does anybody know what I'm talking about, from the planning board, though?
That does not ring a bell with me. I won't speak for the other members in terms of groundwater contamination, but if you'd like to continue, please do.
So with this said, back in 2000, the town in Norton had a moratorium on water hookups. They were forcing people to put wells in. 125, 23, 21, either 19 or 17 Reservoir Street. There's probably four or five wells over here. When the wells went in, the first couple of houses went in, and they had, helping on this, everybody knows, I think it's MTBE. It's whatever parts of gasoline were in the groundwater, to the point where the first couple of houses were built, and then the town let these houses be put on the water line, the water system, because of the contamination in the ground. Now, I know the gas station across the street, about a year or two later, had new tanks put in. I, I don't know if one went to the other. I'm not even being sarcastic. It's like, I really don't know. But my question is, has that ground been tested for contamination? A, B, if it has, did it clear? C, if it has not, and it is contaminated, what do they do to fix all that?
Let's see. That is a question that I don't believe I know the answer to. This is a project that I know water and sewer has been heavily involved in, and that they have been talking about this site. If there was a contamination issue with the land that the town needed to discuss with the applicant, I would expect that they would, but that, I'll add that to my list of things to circle back with the applicant on as soon as you're done.
First and foremost, I've always said this, thank you for, gentlemen, hi Dan, how you doing, for building along and working with it. Same to the attorney. This has been a long process. And to you, ladies and gentlemen, on the planning board, again, thank you, because we're here at 9:30 at night, still slugging away at this. So I appreciate that. And that's all I have to say for now. So thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Campbell, just to circle back on a couple of the items that, that, that person raised, there was a question about whether there would be basements underneath the properties, and what the general height would be from Mansfield Avenue, as well as just clarification on the lighting plan, if there were any changes, as well as the groundwater question.
Certainly. We'll start from the beginning. The, there will not be any basements in the structures. We did say that in the initial public hearings. These structures themselves are going to be under the allowable height. The height allowable in the district is 45 feet. These buildings are designed at 34.5. So that third floor that's in the structures is basically tucked into the ease of the overall structure. We did submit some pictures of, of this building built in another location when we first did this. The height of the building above Mansfield Ave, the first four, is elevation 126. The lowest point right in front of us on Mansfield Ave is 121, 122. Depending on where you are, it's like 120, 21 and a half.
Another four feet up.
So Mansfield Ave is approximately four and a half feet below us, give or take, depending on where you are on, on the property, on the frontage. So that being said, the overall height of the structure will be approximately 39 feet above Mansfield Ave, still well within the, the tree line as well. Photometric, we certainly wanted to withdraw Lot E first. The changes to the overall parking lot didn't change structures a whole lot. If the board requests an updated photometric, we certainly could submit one. We're not planning on changing the overall fixtures that we have on the property. They're going to change approximately three to four feet, depending on where it is, based upon the placement of the islands in the parking lot. They'll be added since we first started the process. Lastly, as far as contamination, the property's been through a Phase 1. The Phase 1 did track the release from the gas station across the street. The release appears to have followed the drain lines that are in Mansfield Ave, the drain lines that cross into Reservoir, and then feed into the groundwater on that entire front portion of the property between Mansfield and Reservoir, not across this property proper. In fact, there were no soil test sites from that release that were maintained on this site, which means that they were found to be clean during the release, and the Phase 1 did come up clean.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay.
There was also a question about planting trees in the wetlands.
Yeah. And that's, that's a, that'll be a conservation question, yeah.
But I think we can answer and tell you that we can't go into the wetlands and start planting things.
You can't, yes. But the town, in theory, could do whatever it felt was appropriate for the wetlands areas.
If it got in order conditions and made additional plantings, it could. We, we just can't touch it.
Yes.
Tim, if you file a notice of intent with Conservation, then you can do whatever work you propose, and we just need the owner's permission.
Yeah. Okay. I do see another virtual hand raise in the Zoom meeting. I also have somebody here at the Agenda in Person, so I'm gonna go back in person, and then I see the name Jane on the Zoom meeting would be next, if you'd like to come up and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Senior. I live at 169 Reservoir Street. I can confirm everything that Mr. Sheehan said about the emergency hookup of all those houses at the end of the street, and how alarming that was for everyone at the time. I have a whole bunch of things here. I'm sorry. So, first of all, I'm glad to see that it's two buildings, not three. I still believe that this is far too densely, dense a development proposal for this piece, especially with the three new houses that just went in, and the new subdivision going in next to that. I'd like to know, I saw in the plan that the 24-unit building was three, three floors. How many floors is the 36-unit building? Or is that also still three, but now it's just larger?
I think it's the same, just longer, yes.
Okay. Regarding lighting, and again, I haven't been to, had a chance to video these either. Have reduced-height lights been proposed? Has that been looked at?
There is a lighting plan that we had with the original submittal. That needs to, that would need to be, obviously, if we're taking a building away, all of those lights go away as well. One of my to-dos to follow up with, as we close, is to make sure, if we want to, ask the applicant for an updated, updated map of that, or whether the board feels that it has the information it needs.
I would like to request, because it is in such close proximity to homes, that they do use reduced-height poles for the parking lots. They may already have that on there. I don't know. But if they don't, they should, in my opinion, as where it is. I also want to know if, in the traffic study, there is an estimate of the increase of vehicles traveling on Reservoir Street included in that. Because a great many of those folks, unless they're going to the bank or produce barn, will come down Reservoir Street, well, and swing around at the end to get it. So I was interested in what that increase to the neighborhood would be. Again, it's a rural, relatively rural road, oldest, one of the older ones in town, in one of the most diverse and densely populated neighborhoods in town. No sidewalks, and we're not likely to get them, I don't believe. The narrowest quarter, portion of the road is, I think, 30 feet. And it wouldn't surprise me if there were still people who owned in the middle of that street, which is something that the town encountered in the other time.
Oh, the right-of-ways on Reservoir Street are, I'm gonna call them confusing to be generous.
Yes.
That would.
So introducing all these people, you know, again, I understand their outlets are on Mansfield Ave, but still, it's a lot to put on there. And we do have the other developments all in that same space going in. So the number of vehicles on that road, where people are also using the road, it's, I'd like to make sure that that's at least looked at. Regarding the three new homes, I can also confirm that those, at least two of those three appear to have been designed to have retaining areas along the frontage of the road, and they have overtalked several times since they've been built, and not just a little. So we were lucky, because we didn't have any rain and then freezing events this winter, but I can see that that could be a real problem there. And, yeah, I'm a little concerned where all this water's gonna go in this tight, these tight spaces.
And to answer your question, I can confirm, they, the traffic study did include the traffic volumes through the intersection of Mansfield Avenue and Reservoir Streets of going up Reservoir.
Coming down Reservoir from the top of the street down.
They're gonna, went through all of the traffic going in both, total volumes in that intersection.
Okay, that's good. I'd be curious to know if they've increased. I would anticipate that they would.
Yeah. And the, the traffic study also includes, includes potential increases in development, including Belfer Farms, this senior center, Community Support Center, as well as developments at 195 Mansfield, and the Reservoir Apartments at 253 Mansfield.
Okay. All right. Again, I'm curious about this particular one, but I'd see how they work it. I also wanted to suggest that the proponent add to the buffer, the vegetative buffer, the natural buffer, wherever they can, to help beef that up. So not in the wetlands, on the property, where they can to beef that buffer for light, for sound, and to preserve as much of the not-urban nature that's to be at that end as possible. That would be very helpful. And then the only other thing I will bring up now, because I think most of it was addressed, and again, I did mention, I agree with, with Mr. Shabat, that it is just, just too dense for what's there. But also, I recall having looked at a study from Serpide on Route 140. They looked at volumes along Mansfield Ave and Foxborough, Mansfield, and Norton. And in the course of that study, I don't know if it actually made it into the final report, but they had several iterations in papers that were published as part of that preparation, where they had stated that they advised that no new curb cuts go in between Great Woods Plaza and the end, the south end of Reservoir Street, and that any existing curb cuts be reduced wherever possible going forward. So it's just another example of the town being involved in a planning study, and then the town just kinda going, "Yeah, okay," and not taking it into consideration.
And that was really to Mansfield Avenue or Reservoir, both? I'm not sure I quite recall that one.
The whole study. They had a section on Mansfield, on Foxborough, Mansfield, and Norton. And then Norton, they broke up from the Mansfield line down to Great Wood Plaza. Great Woods, Roche Brothers, right from McDonald's. And then from there, down to the end of Reservoir. And then from Reservoir down to Route 123.
Okay, understood.
And that was the most important piece of advice they had for that, that section. So, know that's gonna, again, it's, it's irritating when you, you see that we're, we're working and we're getting the advice, we're doing that piece of the work. We just don't seem to adhere to the topic.
And Serpide's been involved with us as well on the, the MBTA communities, projects, and all sorts of other things, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay.
That's what I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt you, but anyone concerned with density in the area or traffic.
with density in the area or traffic in the area should closely follow the state mandated MBTA communities zoning that we are very soon having to deal with.
It won't take hard to, take much work to Google and find multiple towns who are not pleased with the current process.
And we're right in line to be working on it.
It'll be a town meeting in the fall, so we'll see how it goes in the north. Okay.
Also, I got just a brief second. Could Mr. Campbell just refresh my memory on the length of the sewer line that they're installing? I haven't gone back.
Absolutely. The sewer line in total is about 2,700 feet.
2,700 feet.
I do believe that we, I had seen somebody in the Zoom meeting whose first name was Jane who had raised their virtual hand. I don't see that virtual hand raised anymore, so I'm gonna ramble for 15 seconds or so. If you would still like to speak, please introduce yourself to do so. Sorry. It appears they're no longer in the meeting, but if they choose to submit comments later, they certainly can. I'll turn around and see if there's anybody else who'd like to speak. Peter, are you looking to come up?
Nope, nope.
Okay. And I do see one re-raise here, sir, if you'd like to just go ahead.
John, 2825, I'm working again. Quick question on parking. I think you're supposed to have, is there required one car space per apartment, two car spaces per apartment, 1.5? Do we have a town bylaw on that, or is there any rules or regulations stood up?
There's a specific chart based on the use and the amount of parking that's required, yes.
They following with this?
Yes, they're not requesting a waiver on parking.
Okay, cool. And then, thank you for that. And then, one final question. If this gets approved, what would be the timeframe in built case, like break sewer line, start, finish? Because I won't name the building that is still being built, like, four years later in town, but I don't, I'm wondering, like, out of curiosity, how long we're gonna look at construction and art holes and details and all that other stuff?
Understood. I think we may have covered that in an earlier session, but in terms of an overall timeline for the project, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Jacoby, if either of you'd like to just give a comment to generalities, obviously, until there's a shovel in the ground, you can't say with any certainty, but...
I'm not sure if he's asking how long the sewer project is, or how long our construction is, or both.
General from, your permit is in your hand, what do you expect the timeline to roughly be?
Dan?
Absolutely. So I can tell you that the buildings will be faster than the sewer, and the reason the sewer takes as long as it does is because DOT, when you're going down the center of a roadway like that, they're gonna require us to install the sewer and put in a temporary patch. The temporary patch is supposed to last a certain period of time. Then they're gonna require us to tear the temporary patch out, make it wider, put a temporary patch down again. Then for the third time, a few months after that, they're gonna make us tear the whole thing out, make it wider, in some cases, the width of the road because of how we go across it, and then pave it one last time with mass highway hot mix asphalt. So that is probably our longest process, not the actual install, but just mass highways process on a linear foot like this does take some time.
And in terms of the overall construction of the buildings from go to completion?
If you were to give them the go tomorrow and they had the building permit, it would take between six and eight months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that answers the question. I don't think anybody is served by trying to understand what, how long the state will take to do anything, so that's as good as we can do at this point.
Will say.
Okay. I don't see any additional comments or hands raised in the meeting. One question that I took from some of that, just in terms of the board's discretion, whether we would like to ask the applicant to prepare an updated lighting plan with Lot E removed just to confirm all of the photometric information? And if that's something...
We'll do that anyway.
Okay then.
It should be, it should be part of your record. We will do it.
Okay, well, then I don't have to ask you for it then.
We will do it.
Okay. Is there anything else? Given that the applicant has said that they want to respond to the traffic peer review and meet back with us again in a couple of weeks, is there anything else that we would like to ask the applicant to review, prepare, compile for us in that period?
If there's one thing that stands out, would definitely be the idea of recreational access to the woods and the wetlands area. I don't know if that's completely off the table.
You mean Lot E in the back half of the lot on Reservoir Street?
If, I mean, Lot E would be fantastic to have access to also, but specifically coming through behind the apartments.
Well, we're not gonna take license plates of those who park in the parking lot and decide to walk, but I'm not sure that we can create a parking area, especially on Lot E, and I'm not sure how the Conservation Commission would approach that. You know, if there were boardwalks or walking trails or something that were created, if the town wants to create something like that, we can certainly cooperate. But at this point, I think that all I can say is that, you know, if you happen to park your car in our parking lot, there won't be somebody out there taking license plates and deciding whether you live there or not and calling a tow truck.
There might be, so I don't...
There might be, yeah, that's why I'd like it in writing.
I wouldn't go that far. I know I've moved in developments where there is because there's only so many visitor spots and people get antsy about that, so...
But if one or two people are doing that, it won't be a problem. If there's, certainly if there's 20 or 30 people, if the Audubon Society decides to take a walk and brings in a whole crowd, but I...
Then they should park at the shopping plaza and take a walk and visit the commercial businesses.
Yeah, so, so our request then is to go over two weeks.
Okay. Anything additional for the applicant at this time, prior to a motion for continuance?
All right, question to continue, SBR is 201002, 0103, and SB 19928 and 19935 to March 26th.
Yeah, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sergeant.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll go through the rule here. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are continued, and we will see everybody in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Now that we've gone through the meat of our agenda here, just one other thing that I wanted to mention, actually, two things. One, we have the zoning recodification discussion tomorrow. For those who are part of that, I'm gonna call it a mini-committee. And in addition, if two meetings in one week wasn't enough planning discussion for you, I was informed that discussion about the planner is on the select board's agenda for Thursday. I have not been notified or informed of that in any official way as to what that includes. Apparently, that email is, may be forthcoming or may not, or apparently I'm supposed to be telepathic, I don't know, but that is on the agenda. If further information comes in and people would like to speak to that in a way on Thursday, that is on the select board's agenda. I forget exactly what time they're supposed to start. Would we like me to reach out for clarification on that?
Yeah.
Really a meeting nowadays.
I don't know.
Yeah. Housing Authority, generally, pretty sure that's where they're meeting.
It's on the agenda. I didn't look at that part of the agenda, I just looked at the part that said planner. Okay, so I can try to ask for clarification as to whether that is what we requested?
They gonna surprise you with a new planner?
I mean, I've had worse surprises. No, I'd had one conversation with one member of the select board, I think, two or three weeks ago, and I said, "Yeah, maybe we'll look to get an agenda in March," and that was the last communication that I had about it, so great communication. That is the two things that I wanted to go through here. Is there anything further anybody wanted to bring up in the open session?
One, just a question. I have PT at 5:00 tomorrow, so is that meeting for all of the planning board or just the people that wanted to be part of the zoning appeals?
Just people that wanna be involved, Jim.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay. Anything further?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Hearing, no further discussion. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, please.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.